For the player on the pledge. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, and thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory of our life. The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, start out here, approval of minutes. In the absence of any objections or corrections, the minutes shall stand approved for April 19th, 2021, regular council meeting. Citizens Communication, if there's anyone out there on WebEx who has a concern, please type it into the chat box and we will get in touch with you. As well, if there's anybody out here in the crowd who has a concern and wants to talk about something not on the agenda, please come forward. So Steve says no, so we will move. Move on to reports from council committees. Finance and Budget Committee did not meet on April 26 due to lack of agenda items. Safety and Human Resource Committee did not meet on April 26 due to lack of agenda items. And the Technology and Communication Committee did not meet due to lack of agenda items earlier this evening. Introduction of new ordinances. Council President Balauki has done me a major favor and there is none on the list. Second reading of ordinances. Well, once again, there is no second readings on the list. Third reading of ordinances. A resolution authorizing a contract with the Village of Florida for the purpose of operating a water supply distribution system and declaring an emergency. Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Council President Protem. This is the third reading for the contract with the Village of Florida and the City of Napoleon, a contract that expired last year. And we've been in talks with the Village Mayor about the water contract. We sent him a letter last year and sent them this year some terms and conditions. We were able to hammer down the contract that you have in your packet. Wasn't going to plan on going over the terms and conditions again, but just to just say this is the third. This would be for the third and final read. After this, we'll set up a time to execute the contracts and move on. We'll start selling water to them and a new long-term contract.
And as a council, any comments?
I have one, Mr. Protem.
Yes, Mr. Commodore.
I think this is probably the best thing that's happened to the city of Napoleon and the Village of Florida in years. I just wish Liberty Center would have done the same thing, but that's water underneath a dam or over the dam. But this is a good move on both our parts. Thank you.
You're welcome, Jeff. And I would agree, it's any time you have the city and the village, two entities within the same county working together, I think that's positive, not only for the city of Napoleon and the Village of Florida, but for Henry County. So I think this is a good move. With that, Roxanne, please call the roll.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Okay, that has passed then on third reading. Now going down to good of the city. Discussion Action Award of the Lynn Street Improvement Project. Is that Joel or is that?
I'll just turn it right over to Chad.
Chad.
Right up on your screen is the bid award recommendation memo.
This project is for the replacement of the water line on Lynn Avenue from Glenwood Avenue heading to the Westerly Dead End. It involves replacing the existing water line on that street. And then it also will include replacement of the curving and resurfacing of roadway. As the memo states, we received six bids. The low bid received was from Rupp Road Rock Incorporated for $174,161.78. The completion of this project is scheduled for August 14th, 2021, to allow us to have construction in that area finished before school starts. With that in mind, in an effort to expedite the project, I do request council award the project to Rupp Road Rock Incorporated in South Mountain. Thank you.
The engineer's estimate was 205,000, as Chad indicated here. And I think what we had budgeted was 200,000. So we're well under our budget. Rupp Rose Brock, this will be, this isn't something they typically do, but you know, they are a qualified contractor and are capable of doing this job and doing this work, so. And they're local.
We have this rule, we'll go.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Jeff.
I never knew Rupp Rose Brock did water lines. That's, it surprised me when I seen this Friday in the council packet. When did they get into this type of work?
This is a new area for them. They have hired personnel that formerly worked at other area, or other area contractors who have experience in roadway and water line construction. Although the company itself doesn't have much experience in this area, their staff that will be doing the work does have experience. So we decide, or we decided to recommend moving forward with them. We will have full-time inspection on the project.
That's good enough for me. If they want to get into something like that, I'm glad. There's other people out there doing this now. That's the only question I have. Thank you.
Chad, are you surprised we got six good bids? And five underneath your estimate?
I'm not surprised we received bids under the estimate. Last year, we were estimating projects very tightly because that was the instruction I was given.
No, I guess, I mean, I'm just surprised we had six bids.
I'm surprised local contractors don't have their schedules more full.
That's what I mean, yeah.
But we had a similar situation with American Road.
Right.
I'm hearing that there are more jobs coming out since we opened these bids. There's two or three opening in the next couple of weeks. It seems the projects in the area just are supposed to start this year, which is to our benefit.
Right.
Thank you, COVID. No, I don't thank COVID for anything.
I just think that it's just, usually by now you put something out, and this time of the year, you might get one or two.
Yeah.
So that's awesome.
Anybody else from council, any comments? Then I think what I need is a motion to award this contract?
Yes, motion.
Second.
Roxanne, call the roll.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Okay, it is done. Item number two, discussion of action. Award of 2021 sanitary sewer program. Mr. City Manager.
I'll just turn it right over to Chad again.
Back to Chad.
Okay, as part of our requirements by the EPA for our permit, we're required to clean all the sewers in the city, clean and televise on a 10-year cycle. This is, I believe this is year six, six or seven. We have four to go, so this will be year seven. We budgeted $80,000 for this project. We received four valid bids, the low bid being Advanced Rehabilitation Technology with a bid of $59,344. We've worked with this company multiple times in the past. And because of our experience with this firm and their low bid, I would recommend awarding this contract to Advanced Rehabilitation Technology.
Thank you, Chad. Comments? Okay, I need a motion now to award this contract?
So moved.
Second.
Roxanne, call the roll.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Okay, item number three, discussion of action. Final award on the 2021 wastewater treatment plant improvement project. Is that Chad also?
Yes, sure, what the hell.
If you recall, a few weeks back, you made a tentative award for the 2021 wastewater treatment plant improvements to Kirk Brothers Company Incorporated. That tentative award was pending the approval by DIPA for our funding. They have since approved that funding. Total is approximately $15 million, which will cover the construction costs, the design costs, any other costs incurred during the project. The interest rate on that loan is 0.37%. And I apologize, Joel, do you remember the term? Was that 25 years? I think it was 25 years. We were going to do 22, I think.
No, we did 25. You're right. Yep. It was 25.
So that's 25 years. And since DIPA did award funding to us late last week, I believe, I'm just requesting a final approval of awarding the contract to Kirk Brothers Company Incorporated.
We originally had our rates set up so that it was a 22-year. And that was based on a 1% interest rate. Or was it a point?
We assumed one, hoping for 0.67.
Yep, and I think when we were doing the rates, we wound up basing it off of a 0.8% interest rate because we knew we were going to get hardship rate from what the DIPA program offers. So when we got our rates back, Chad was able to help get, you know, get that down to 0.37%. That helped, you know, move the number, move the needle for us a little bit to help us get some more long-term savings. So we opted for the 25-year so that we'll be able to bank more because we know on the heels of this project, we've got other long-term control plan projects in our long-term control plan mandated by the EPA that are going to be costly. So we'll at least be able to kind of build that, hopefully build that fund up a little bit and enough to, you know, pay for some of those projects out of pocket. So we're not borrowing anymore. And even if we did have to borrow, we still got a little bit of cap space with the rates that were approved. So that, you know, eventually, you know, when we go to look at rates again in four years, you know, what are we going to need to do? Are we going to need to do anything? And this could be, long-term, could be savings for the rates, you know, the way we have it set up right now. So hopefully, when we look back at it four years, we'll be in good position to make a more favorable decision than what we made this past time. Just a little explanation on the rates.
May I ask?
Yes, sir.
Joel, what's the difference of annual payment that those three years make?
The three years, I got you. Yeah, the three years. So, but I don't have that in front of me, my apologies. But it was about 100, I want to say 120 to 130,000 dollars a year. So let's say the project is designed, we start construction, we go out to bid, and five years from now, at a, you know, today's rate, we estimated that the Washington Street Sewer Line at about four to four and a half million.
Probably around four million, yeah.
So that's today's dollars. What it's going to be in four to five years, not really sure, but at least it gives us a little, a little extra to sock away. And that extra, you know, 130,000 could go towards that service of a project that size. So hoping that that'll cover it in whole or in part. At least in part, something to work with.
Is there any prepayment penalty or anything like that?
Not from DIPA.
For 0.37, hopefully we have better use for our dollars than prepaying this.
Right.
For sure. You know what I mean? If we can get, if we can get 1% by saving it, we'll just put it, we'll save it versus paying it off.
And to be quite honest, that was part of the, part of the thought process and the calculation was that, you know, at 0.37%, we can go an extra three years, save ourselves more money for future projects that we know we'll have to do that are EPA mandated.
Yeah.
Yeah, I always stress that whenever we have the discussion, I always stress they're EPA mandated to make sure that, you know, everybody, at least for the record and for anybody listening in, is that, you know, we're not doing these projects willy-nilly. The projects are needed, but they're also EPA mandated.
Thank you. Anything else, council? Okay, I need a motion for approval of, to award the final award letter for the 2021 wastewater treatment plant improvement project.
A motion.
Second.
Okay, Roxanne, call the roll.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Item number four, discussion action. Funding options for the American Road and Oakwood Avenue project. Is that you, sir?
Yes, sir.
Take it away.
Thank you. In your packets, there was, I spent a little time putting together an explanation, just kind of timeline of, you know, how we got to this point. So I don't know if you wanted me to go through the whole thing, if everybody had a chance to read it, or, you know, how you wanted to address it. I could, I could go through this in brief and talk about a plan going forward.
How things get to the, get to the decision. We've done our homework.
Okay.
It's my opinion. I don't know.
Okay, sir.
So skip the introduction and background and just, just get right into the options. We talked about the CIB loan. It's a 3% interest. We were told at one point it's up to 30 years with some flexibility because it's tied to a TIF on backloading payments. That was not, that was conveyed to us over a year ago with Mommy Valley Planning Organization. And since then, they've backed off of that. It is a 3% interest for 20-year term. You know, it's an option that still works. There's no prepayment penalty after 36 months. You don't make any payments for the first 30 months. So overall, it's a really good, it's still a really good option, even if it was to be used as a bridge loan for, you know, financing another, in another way. We also looked at, met with the Port Authority and Mommy Valley Planning, and us met with the Port Authority. They said that they were looking at more of like the 4% range because that's, it's not from their bond fund. It's actually from their reserve balance. So that's, that one is going to, the key thing here is I think that's going to take a lot more time to develop and really, you know, fully understand. And they have to get their Board of Trustees approval too and everything else. So that was, it seemed a little more convoluted than, and more costly, to be honest with you. But then we did look at the option of borrowing internally. That allows for the most flexibility. And also at the lowest rate, we are allowed to do it. Oh, I see, I got that wrong. But ORS, it's ORC sections. But, you know, we can structure the terms and conditions to allow us the flexibility to make payments later as the TIF district grows. And the TIF districts, you know, always, they grow over a period of time as more development happens and property valuations increase. So the last one, and just as an evaluation exercise, the do-nothing alternative. You know, I always have that as the, as an option too. And forego the project, you know, the pros and cons to everything. I think the pros to this, starting with the pros of everything, you know, you're not, nobody's out anything. It's just, you know, the project sits on the shelf and, you know, we move on and wait for a later date for when this project is needed. However, I say, I think the downside to this is that we do have favorable bids in hand right now. And we also have the need. This road is needed to be replaced. And I don't believe that it's in the city's best interest to repave this as is. I think it needs to be beefed up because all the land around it is zoned industrial. So if industrial growth is desired in this area, all the land is zoned and it's in the master plan. I think we have to rebuild it to an industrial standard to, you know, to accommodate all the industrial truck traffic that's out there now and growing. So, and that's, that's a real brief analysis of the, of the options. You know, and the recommendation, you know, I mean, there's more detail in here of those. The recommendation would be to move forward with the internal borrowing. You know, do a 30-year term. There's no penalty for repayment, early payoff. I did want to point out too that in the analysis, in our agreements, there are, in TIF districts, there are compensation agreements with the school districts. As you recall, we have two school districts that are at play here, Liberty Center and Napoleon School Districts. This TIF district resides in both of their districts. So they approved of it and the agreement was and is that this project would be the first project. All money coming in would pay this project off first. And then any money coming in after that would be used towards whatever infrastructure needs there are in the area. So, so that's why definitely no penalty for early payoff. That way, we can continue to pay down principal as more money starts coming in and we can make our payments. So it's market interest rates. Right now, we're looking at a 1.5% to 2.5%. Just depends on what it is at the time when we, when we do this deal. And I would also suggest here to defer the payments till at least January 1st, 2024. That's similar to how the CIB loan was going to be set up. And then, and then backloading the payments to match the TIF revenue estimates. Right now, Will Burns from Mommy Valley Planning is working on the TIF revenue estimate still. I did also mention in here that, you know, I mean, there is a learning curve for a lot of people that just haven't dealt with TIF districts. I know that Mommy Valley Planning hasn't dealt with a TIF district, especially a 40B TIF district. I mean, they have done TIF districts, but just kind of at an arm's length and helping communities out. So as, you know, internally, you know, we haven't done one here either. So of course, Kevin Garringer's, you know, coming in and learning some new things as well. So it's, there's that process we're going through. But that's the, that's the basic gist. I mean, there's more, like I said, there's more detail in here. And I don't believe that the, the best option is to do nothing alternative either because of the, because of the need and because of the favorable bids that we got right now. So that's it in a nutshell. I will say that, given the timing of this and, you know, for appropriating, for appropriations and getting it set up, because there's a backend piece to it too, we're working with our bond counsel to get this set up. So, and they won't work with us until we have legislation in place. So we'll get, you know, that, those documents put in place and everything else. And once we do that, then we can close on it and get, you know, get everything, you know, start making payments and have that allocation in place. So I was going to request that if council decides that you want to direct the law director to draft legislation for this, I would request that this be passed under suspension and emergency just for the timing purposes, again, to keep, to keep this project moving and keep everything, keep it on track.
Is the legislation already in place? Has Billy got it drawn up?
I don't believe so. I'm sorry.
No, I haven't written that. And in fact, we'll have to talk to bond counsel and see whether or not he can have it done that quickly. But we'll certainly attempt to get it done quickly.
Okay. Thank you, Billy.
Ross?
What would be the amount that we actually borrow from that electric fund?
Estimated 1.1 million. And I say estimated because at this point, we have about $320,000. I'm trying to scroll up right now. But $320,000 in grant funds still able to be used for the project. The bids came in at just under 1.4 million. So I say estimated 1.1 million because there's always a change order that, you know, you didn't, we didn't anticipate. So it's the just-in-case money. But, you know, 1.1 is the, is a good ballpark number to go.
And those funds primarily would be coming from the AMP purchase, correct?
It would be the Electric Development Fund. So right now, I believe that there's, and again, I don't have that from the Electric Development Fund. I didn't bring that sheet with me. It's in my office. But the electric reserve balance right now is 4.3 million, maybe higher. And I believe the Electric Development Fund is about 3.4 million in it right now. And the, the, the deal with AMP would, if council approves of going with the AMP transmission that we've been discussing in the Electric Committee meeting for many months, over a year, that would yield an estimate, an estimate of 3.2 million on top of that in the Electric Development Fund. And just for reference that, and for the record, that would be for the remainder, asset transfer of the remainder of the Northside Substation, the 69 KV line that connects to Industrial Substation and Industrial Substation.
You hit on the pros of each option. Can you just touch on cons potentially for this option?
The cons of borrowing internally are that the funds aren't available right away for, for spending for other purposes. That would be it. The other, the other purposes though, with, with a balance of, you know, 3.3 million, 3.4 million, and, and a potential additional 3.2 million is substantial to the point where we just, we don't have the projects to, I guess what I'm getting is there, there isn't anything that needs that influx of funds outside of paying for the substations ourselves, which we've discussed too at length, which is, you know, where we'd be getting an influx of funds in. But by doing the substation projects ourselves, it'd be all money out. And that would be, you know, roughly $10 million for all three substations. So it's a, it's a cost avoidance and a, and a, and a cost influx for us to do the deal with AMP Transmission. Does that answer?
Yes, thank you.
The current $3.4 million is in the Economic Development Fund? Is that what you call it, Joel?
Electric.
Electric Development Fund, yep. Is that, when somebody pays their bill, some of the bill automatically goes into that fund? How's it fun to get more money in it?
Well, it happens over time and usually at the, at the end of the year when we roll the year. So what we take, there was one year, my, the very first year I was here, I remember this because, you know, no fault of Greg's, he just didn't, he wasn't at the AMP meeting, so he didn't know what to budget for our, our electric purchases. So what we're purchasing from in our AMP bill. Well, that year just so happened that the, and I didn't know this because I was, you know, I was new to the, the whole system. The hydroelectric plants came online and, and we were actually rate stabilizing. We set up a rate stabilization fund to keep the costs from, the rates from spiking. fund to keep the costs from, the rates from spiking. Well, eventually you run out of that and your, and your rates are spiked. So that was the only year where it actually dipped because our electric purchases were higher than what we had budgeted for. Since then, you know, we've, we've honed in on, or I've honed in on how much we're actually going to be able to spend and then whatever's carried over gets put back into those reserve balances. So you've got a Electric Development Fund and Electric Reserve Fund, Operating Reserve Fund.
And the development has 3.4 and the reserve has what?
4.3.
How much?
4.3.
4.3, thank you.
Overall, I would just, just overall between the two funds, it's about 7.8 million.
Okay. The, those are all with, those dollars are all with Meteor and Associates right now, right? Invested with Meteor and Associates?
Yes.
Earning one-ish probably?
On the high end.
Okay. Is the rest of the infrastructure in place around this development? So we don't have to tear up the road and put in up sewer line, water line? Are those all industry over here rock and roll?
Yes. That was done, correct me if I'm wrong, Chad, those were done about 12 years ago when the properties annexed them?
It was longer than that. It was before I got here.
Okay.
When they did the North Point Development.
Yeah.
So 20 years ago.
Okay.
Okay.
12-inch water, 12, 15-inch sanitary sewer.
Much like we have on Independence for where Jack Products is, right?
If, if we have more capacity.
On that side.
On American than we do on.
Okay.
Independence.
Okay. These, these balances for development and the reserve, that's kind of the way we self-insure, right? We have insurance for a major storm to come through, but this is some of our own insurance, right?
Yeah.
Because, I mean.
More or less, yes.
I mean.
You, you take a big hit in the electric fund, you know, you're, you're, they're, they're million-dollar transformers.
Well, and that's.
So if you get a lightning strike or something, yeah.
Well, not, but necessarily, you know, if a tornado comes through and it hits the wrong place, you're going to need every dollar of that plus every, every, every piece of insurance. So we're.
Yes.
Now, when we have this, we don't have a prepayment penalty. So if we needed to, we always could go and get other kind of funding for it, right?
Correct, in a pinch. That's right.
And it gets paid back into the development fund, right? Not the reserve, but the development fund?
Correct.
Okay. Because it's coming out, 100% coming out of the development fund?
Correct.
Right? Okay. Yeah. So if we're making one and we compare ourselves more than one and we can get it back, yeah, there's risk there, obviously. There's risk, I think you do.
Seems the most flexible.
It seems the most flexible. It's, it'd be up to future councils to go, you can't pay that back. You can't pay that back. You know what I mean? So the 30 years starts in 2024 or it starts before that?
So that would start upon execution of the agreement. So if it was 2021.
Okay. Gotcha.
Seems like interest rates would make doing the project in our best interest right now, not waiting for any reason.
Yeah, I think there, yeah, there's a lot of benefits. It's, you know, CIB loan 3% at a time when they started that program, 3% was great. Now it's awful. I mean, you know what I mean? So it, but you know, the CIB loan, it's, it's, it's a great program that does, does offer some flexibility, but whenever you're borrowing outside, you're beholden to another agency. And, and at least with this, it's, we're beholden to ourselves. I liken it to, you know, borrowing from your 401K. You know, you're paying yourself back that, that money to your retirement fund and with interest. So yeah, there's risk to it, but my opinion is that the, the fund can handle it. It's, it's at least, you know, one of the healthier enterprise funds that we have. And, you know, we, we, we take good care in managing that. You know, we, we use this fund to pay down the debt on the solar field. And we also used it this year to pay off the AMP GS project, which was kind of a albatross that's been sitting out there for, for several years. So, you know, I'm confident in how it's been managed. It's, it's been, you know, been pretty systematic in how we've, how we've approached it. So there's no doubt in my mind that not only with the current balance that's there now and the balance that's in the, the projected, you know, revenues, if, again, if council approves of the deal with AMP transmission, that, that won't be the end of it. We'll, we should see even more coming back into it as long as our projections hold for energy usage going out through, through the rest of the year and rolling over into next year.
Okay. With that information, Chad, anything else you need to add?
Not unless you have a question.
Okay. Would there be a motion for, to direct the law director to draft legislation for this funding option of American Road through the electric?
I'll make that.
Go ahead, Jeff.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
We have a second. Any more discussion? Roxanne, call the roll.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on. Item five, discussion action, renewal of liquor permits for the city, in the city of Napoleon. Is Chief Mack?
I believe I saw him on.
Chief was on.
He is on.
Chief Mack? Ron, liquor permits, chief?
When he and I, when he and I discussed it, there were no issues with any of the permits. So no action is needed.
Okay. As long as he's okay with that. Because he's not responding to.
Yeah.
You didn't address any concerns to me before you left today.
Okay. So what do we need on that one then?
We'll do anything, do we?
You don't need to.
Nope.
Okay. So no problem there? Okay. Discussion action, 2022 tax budget proposed schedule. Is that our finance director? People cannot hear me, I guess.
No, people can hear you.
Oh, okay.
She's unmuted.
Kelly, we can't hear you if you're talking.
I can fill in if you'd like.
Go ahead, sir.
This was, I don't have the schedule, but this was something that was going to be discussed in the, I believe in the, the Finance and Budget Committee. And then requested to bring back legislation. This is an annual, this is for an annual piece of legislation. So it's not anything that's out of the ordinary. This is something that happens every year. And I believe it's something that has to pass due to the timing of it. It has to go to the county auditor's office.
Okay.
So.
Can you hear me now?
Listen, yeah.
Now we can hear you, Kelly. Go ahead.
Sorry, I had to go out and come back in. I missed if Joel said anything.
No, go ahead.
Okay. So in, in the pack, it should have been the memo for the tax budget process. And today I had to certify if there was any final judgments, but we do not have any for 2022 at this point. And then on May 17th, I'll present the tax budget for 2022, which is mainly just the tax levies that we have and ask that the law director draft the legislation. And then June 7th would be the first read. The 21st would be the second read and the 6th would be the third read. And we have to have it adopted on or before July 15th. And then we submit it to the county auditor before June, or July 20th.
Sounds good.
Yep.
Sounds good, Kelly. So nothing you need tonight, right?
No, just the schedule. I'm sorry about that.
Okay. Well, thank you, Kelly. So I'm moving on to item seven, creation of a new fund for American Rescue allocations. And then it says, direct the law director to draft legislation.
That's just you. You just gotta tell them to do it. That's how we spend our Biden bucks.
Yep.
So tell, just tell her to go ahead?
Yep.
Well, I'm telling you to go ahead, Kelly.
No, that's law.
Oh, you gotta, yeah.
Kelly, excuse me?
Yep.
Okay. Billy, did you hear that? Don't respond to me.
You can take a motion and a, and a second and then call the roll for directing the law director.
Okay. Do I have a motion to direct the law director to draft that legislation?
Motion.
So moved.
Okay. Roxanne, call the roll.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Sorry about that, folks. Move on under eight, discussion action, accept PEP grant in the amount of $1,000 to the Napoleon Police Department.
Just looking for a motion to accept it. And hopefully Chief Mack, if you can, if you're on or can hear this and can unmute, if you could explain what the grant is going to be used for.
Make the motion to accept it.
Yeah.
I'll second.
So we've got some other ones here. Let me check.
Hold on.
You got a first and a second.
We got a first and a second.
Yep.
Any discussion?
Nope.
Roxanne, call the roll.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Okay. Just a donation.
Okay. The next one, discussion action to accept donation of $500 from American Legion Burt G. Taylor Post 300 to the police department for the summer youth program.
What's the grant for?
Motion?
No motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay.
Go ahead and take. Roxanne, call the roll.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
I got it.
So many good things, so many dollars get donated by the legion. So really appreciate all the stuff they do for, for Napoleon.
Gosh, okay.
Thank you.
Always the first ones to step up.
Yes, they are. Legion, VFW, veterans organizations, absolutely.
All right, I'm gonna let you go.
And their income has probably been a little down too with COVID.
I'm sure it's not as usual. Yep. Very good point.
Okay. Item number 10, discussion of action, accept donations from the Henry County Community Foundation and Corporation for the Climbing Wall at the Napoleon Athletics Center. Aquatic Center. Is the parks director online by any chance?
No, he's not. But this was actually a, a, a grant from the, or a donation from the Limbird Foundation, the Limbird Recreation Fund. So that Climbing Wall has been ordered and should be arrived, should arrive on time and, and be installed prior to the opening.
Okay.
Very generous of them to do that.
Thank you. Any other comments there? So that should be there by our ribbon cutting. A motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roxanne, call the roll.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
And number 11, discussion or action, donation of $1,000 from the Napoleon VFW Post 8218 to the fire department for the purchase of water rescue equipment. And the fire chief is here in person. Would you like to comment?
Yeah, the VFW stopped by and did donate a check for $1,000 for water rescue equipment. So what we're going to be purchasing will be some additional throw rings and rope, some things to put inside the airboat that can be used. So we do really appreciate that donation.
And again, like the mayor alluded to, this is our veteran organization supporting the city of Napoleon. So motion?
No motion.
Second?
Second.
I'll second.
Too late.
Roxanne, call the roll.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Okay. We want to roll with donations here this evening. Discussion or action, accept a donation of grain safety training equipment to the fire and rescue department from eight members of the agricultural community. Chief?
Yeah. So this, this is a huge donation from the agricultural community that's come together for a grain rescue for our training facility. It's been a vision that's been in place for the last, I would say, four or five years that I've been discussing mainly with the, the leaders of steering this was the Gerald Grain Center. And through the Steve Queen, who is, you know, their safety individual that works over there. Years ago, our members would go to Sydney, Ohio to a grain rescue training, which would involve getting engulfed in grain, also doing high angle rope rescue, that sort of thing. It was a four-day class. The, the grain companies would then sponsor our members to go there. Excellent class. Unfortunately, that class has then not really taken place in the last later years. Steve was a main component of getting that going back in the day. And so as we, him and I, being that I've gone through the class, we wanted to be able to try to recreate that up in Northwest Ohio, that same sort of avenue. And what that draws is draws individuals from not only the fire rescue divisions, but also from all the different grain, because all these individuals also get trained too, because they're working around those bins and everywhere. So then the class takes place. And then what this incorporates is like a 27-foot round grain bin that will be put at the training facility site, which is that, which you see there. It'll be something very similar to that. This is actually the Sydney location. So these are the pictures from when we took that class. The grain leg is actually, in the case of talking to the main instructors for this class, instead of having the grain leg, which would be that one that was on the right, will be just an I-beam. And so Metal X actually will be donating the I-beam towards the project is, is what they had told me. So that'll be an I-beam that'll be fixed out there at the grain, at the training center as well. And then the last piece of this donation is an actual mobile trailer. That is your grain engulfment. So you have two grain bins that are on there that's accompanied by two augers. And as you're engulfing one person on the, on the one side to show to use our, to use our equipment to do the rescue, the, the grain is just being augered into the other bin. And so then that way we can move over and do that training as well. This, this mobile trailer will be used to be able to put on displays at the, like say, the fairgrounds or at, at Ag Day to really try to express how much work it takes to actually perform a rescue and hopefully just provide more education to the farmers in, in Henry County and even in, in Northwest Ohio. So the idea here moving forward, that four-day class consists of a classroom portion, then out at the training facility. And then we've also talked with like Campbell Soup and Gerald Grain and those other ones, because we'll have those 100-foot bins where the ladder truck can't reach. So the ladder truck can't get up there. So that means we have to do it all by hand. Package patients in Stokes baskets and use all the rope. And that class incorporates all that. So moving forward in the future, that will be the ideal. We'll be able to have one class and then one refresher each year for the area. So huge, huge thing for us in, in Northwest Ohio. And I mean, as you've seen the total there, it's approximately $52,000 that was donated in, in just a couple of months. As we did a presentation, talked about it all, but then they committed to just wanting to, to build it as they work in all their own partnerships and that sort of thing. So yeah, really, really excited about it. Does anybody have any questions or?
I'm pretty sure that's the largest number donated since I've been mayor. The largest individual gift was 20-some thousand to the fire department by the Bonnie, Bonnie Eddy family for the automatic CPR machines.
Yep.
I think that's the biggest donation I think I've seen. So that just, it just goes to show, you know, the need for it here in the area. Unfortunately, or fortunately, I know somebody who had this happen to them and they survived. And they're one of the few that survived. You, you get in to grain you can't get out of and it's pushing on you, you're suffocating and it's not 72 degrees in that grain. And trying to get them out, cutting holes in the side of the, the grain bin to get You, you get in to grain you can't get out of, and it's pushing on you, you're suffocating, and it's not 72 degrees in that grain, and trying to get them out, um, cutting holes in the side of the, the, the grain bin to get as much grain out as you can, to do everything you can, so, um, wow, I'm blown away. This is awesome.
Yeah.
Absolutely awesome.
Me too, uh, really, because I, I know how much this really means for our area. There's not many people that can perform the task of the grain rescue in the amount of time that it is. So to have the, the gentleman that was able to be saved in that case, um, is a unique situation. So, I think that just the value of bringing the education to the people, like, the vision for that trailer is to have that trailer, but, um, I've talked a lot about having 50-inch screen TVs with cameras on the top, so when you can narrate the actual rescue, how long it really takes to deploy. Because I grew up on a farm, and I know that farmers, you just gotta get the job done. There's not enough people to do it, you're gonna do it, somebody's gotta get in there and do it, and that's what happens, and they don't think about all those safety mechanisms. If I could just get them to think that one second, that, just that, take that brief second to think before they do something, it might save a life. And so I, I think that the more people that we can train in the area, um, the, the better off we'll be, so. Just so you guys all know in the future, the, the plan will be to, uh, try to, I, I would still like to try to coordinate getting a sign put out there at the time and, and do a ribbon cutting for this, uh, event of when it's actually in place, and then really maximize on the use of, of this, uh, facility. So, we are, we are super excited about it and, and very fortunate to be recipients of it, so.
So there'll be a grain bin plus a stem?
Correct.
Right?
And, and then that, and so Gerald Grain not only committed to doing their portion of the grant, but they're also committed to, uh, doing all the concrete out there. So that grain bin will be fixed on the concrete and then sold that leg, uh, to be stationed in there, and, yeah, and so, um, we're hoping to be able to tap ahold of Chad and Jeff Rappi for some stone around that to fill in that area.
Right.
Um, but, but otherwise, yes, uh, it'll be, it'll be a.
I believe.
I-beam, and, and we originally, so we originally had a leg, and Gerald Grain had a leg, uh, but as talking to those main instructors, they felt that it was better, gonna be beneficial, more beneficial to have just the I-beam, uh, with those different components and things.
Thank you, chief. Very impressive, very impressive. Thank you.
Thanks.
Clayton?
Yeah, Jeff?
I've got a question.
Yeah.
Is this a movable trailer?
It is? So it is, it is a mobile trailer. Um, it'll be, um, it'll be moved and also be able to be used by other departments. So, if another department wants to take it to their Ag Day and that sort of thing, that's kind of the whole idea here, is to get as many people trained as, or just, you know, recognizing with it. So if they're just gonna be doing a simple training, then that's the idea too, so that, that, that can go places.
The weight of this, will there are three-quarters be able to pull that?
So, you, you're on to something there, Jeff. Uh, our, our.
Yes?
Our pickup truck, we will definitely have to use, um, probably one of the city pickup trucks to be able to, to be able to move it, um, in the events that we do need to move it, because, uh, 806, our pickup truck currently, uh, it will struggle. I mean, it pulls the hazmat trailer, it'll pull it, but, uh, it, it will struggle on being able to pull a trailer, eh, even on this size, but it already does struggle a little bit on the, on the hazmat one, uh, just because of the, the 250 to 300 gallons of water that's in there. So it will require a little bit bigger of a truck, um, but, and I don't fully have that piece figured out yet. I do know that there is some, some trucks as far as availability, you know, using one of the old, you know, the city three-quarter tons or, you know, one tonners that they have, so.
Sure. And where do you plan on storing this?
Uh, so the, the storage for this place right now is, um, we do have some room in the fire station, uh, but the idea will be hopefully to have it, um, out at the training facility, um, to be able to be stored. Now, I do know that there's no coverage out there right now for it to be stored underneath anything. We don't have anything in place as far as like a carport or anything like that. So, um, that, that is still a work in progress, but, uh, we're gonna try to make sure that we, we wanna try to get it inside. Currently, we have that command trailer, as you guys seen during the girls' event, so that command trailer's in there, that, it should be able to fit right where that area is at right now.
Okay, thank you, Clayton. You've answered my questions.
Yep.
Any other questions, members of council? Can we have then a motion to accept this donation?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
You got that? Roxanne, call the roll.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes?
Molly?
Yes.
And the last donation this evening, uh, discussion action to accept the donation of paint from Gurken Paving for repainting the Wildcat in downtown Napoleon in partnership with the Napoleon Area Schools. Joel?
Thank you. Uh, yes, Gurken Paving did, uh, donate the paint needed to repaint this, which will take place on May 15th? At, uh, at, at 10:00 AM, I believe is, is what it's.
Saturday, right?
Yep.
Who's painting?
Uh, the schools are, are secured, some volunteers, so that, I don't know how much of, uh, broadcast they did for it, but I imagine we'll have a pretty good turnout. But there are spring sports and, and things going on still too, so there'll be some scheduling issues, but there'll be as many people as we think.
Well, they've done it before. They produced a number of students, so that wouldn't surprise me.
It doesn't take, it won't take long. Uh, they also have, um, uh, made up some stencils for, uh, doing some pile prints out, around that crosswalk too. So those are still rails, those aren't the piano keys like in the, uh, like in the other crosswalks around town.
Okay. Okay, motion to accept?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, Roxanne, call the roll.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes?
Molly?
Yes.
Okay, we will go around the table. Tonight, we will sort of do it in the order of seating around the tables and start out with Kelly.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Ross?
Nothing for me, sir.
Okay, Ken?
Uh, the street sweeper's been out, working on all the streets. They're looking pretty good.
Good. Pass that on to the guy driving around.
That's all I have.
That's all you have? I have just one item here tonight, but, uh, what it is, is I have, I volunteered about a year ago at this time to move myself off the main table. It's for concerns dealing with COVID. And in, in a sense, I have been setting, first of all, on that side of the fence, and then more recently back here, where I really can't see the screen. So what I am asking is if the majority of council approves, I would like to see all seven of us starting, as a birthday present to me, starting on my birthday in two weeks. All seven of us sitting here at the main table. Uh, Ken has shared that he has been vaccinated, and so have I, and I know the mayor is working on it.
Want to meet to go, and I'm fully vaccinated, yeah.
So I, it's, if council is, uh, in approve.
Love to have you back up here, absolutely, yeah.
No objections from anybody?
No.
Jeff?
Oh, no, it's about time.
Okay. So, that's what I plan to do then in two weeks. I plan to get back to my normal pro tem seat, at which time hopefully our president is back in. Because tonight, I wasn't doing very good. I'm getting the online people to respond, so I don't know. Mr. Mayor?
Uh, talked with Mr. Adams from the, uh, Legion, and they're gonna have Memorial Day on, open to public on Memorial Day, start at 10 o'clock on Memorial Day, Monday, at the boat ramp to do our loss at sea. And we'll make our way, uh, to the, the, uh, the Veterans Monument, uh, there by the sheriff's station, and that portion will start about 10:30. Um, so at some point, he will ask you, he will ask me, who can make it, so please let me know by the next council meeting who can make it, so I can let him know how many chairs we'll need, uh, up there on that. Uh, tonight, we talked with the commissioners, we talked about Jennifer Arps, and her Henry has, um, kind of her, her branding for Henry County, was wondering if we can invite her, um, wanna have her come to full council, so introduce herself to all the council, how about the first meeting in June? If that's possible, or the second meeting in June? Does anybody have a preference? No? First one would be the 7th, so let's just do the June the 7th, if that works in her schedule. And if not, then we'll do the 21st, if it's in her schedule. Sounds good. Yeah. Um, had a conversation this past week with Pat Bylow from the Henry County Civic Center, I think that's what they call themselves.
Henry County Cultural.
Cultural Center?
Yes.
Yeah. They had open house, um, yesterday, to have another one on the 16th of May. Um, I could not make this, this, yesterday's, um, but just be aware that they have another one on the 16th if you wanna go through. Um, they have some good momentum, they got their debt paid off, and so they're trying to get, trying to work really quick to get some funds to get that, that project started. And, uh, to get it, not started, but to get it, um, into the reconstruction phase of that project. Uh, last but not least, any executive session for personnel? That's all I have, thank you very much.
Okay, Lori?
I just wanted to say that I thought the parking lot at the pool looks pretty nice. Progress there looks good. And congratulations in order, right, to Officer Strickland?
Yes.
His, uh, award with the youth in Henry County too.
Absolutely.
Pretty awesome. And thank you for your hard work. That's all.
Thank you, right. Jeff?
Nothing for me.
Okay, thank you. Molly?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay. Billy?
Nothing for me, thank you.
A lot of nothings tonight. Joel?
Nothing.
Whoa.
Nothing is something. Jeff, come in, I'll, I'll call you on my cell phone for the executive session.
Okay.
Okay, well, Mr. Mayor did have something, so he's asking for an executive session for personnel. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roxanne, call the roll.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes?
Molly?
Yes.
Okay. We will adjourn to go into ex-
We're ready. Uh, if Rox is ready.
I'm ready.
Okay. Do I have a motion to come out of executive session for personnel?
So moved.
Second.
Roxanne, call the roll.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Okay, uh, executive session for personnel, no action was taken. Uh, approval or payment of bills? Any questions? And Mr. City Manager, we did have a discussion with, uh, Councilman Nepley over here, who is willing to let you on the table too if you would desire.
Oh, all right.
At the next meeting.
Yeah, that works.
So if, I mean, hopefully in, in time, we'll get, uh, Kelly and Billy back there too.
I got my, I got my two shots, so I'm good.
Okay. So we're just, we were just checking everybody's, uh, vaccine status, so.
Nice.
In a hippo complaint way.
Yes, of course.
Did I do something wrong here?
Not at all.
So, yeah, and hopefully, like I say, hopefully in time, we can get, uh, Kelly and Billy back on the table too.
Yep. I do have a quick mulligan. The, the pep grant was for a snow blower for the police department.
Cool.
And then the youth program was for Safety City, for the $500 from.
Chief Mack has been a lot of talk to me, right?
Yeah.
He just made them mad. He never shows up to our meetings anymore.
Technical difficulties.
Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
I'd pick, pick a pick.
Okay.
Roxanne, call the roll.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
We are adjourned.